Greetings, everyone, and good evening and welcome to this Monday, March 17th, St. Patty's Day edition of the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Ms. Cole. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Very good, thank you. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection. Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Quentin Hart, our 4th Ward Council member and Mayor Proten. Mr. Hart?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Also with the approval of the agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from March 10.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments regarding the agenda of the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B14. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Vice Chair. The bills this week are $641,225.07. That's 641,225.07.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions regarding consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Schmidt.
I would vote yes on everything, but I need to abstain on a payment of $1,038.65 to Schmidt Telecom Partners for work done on behalf of the city.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Motion carries. Item number 8, tonight we are on the consent agenda. We are appointing Thomas Klinsky. Tom, are you here?
Is that him?
Okay, he's not here tonight. Thanks, Kent. But Thomas is our new preparator technician here at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. So, thank you, Tom, if you're watching, for stepping up and coming on board, and we're looking forward to a long and fruitful relationship. So, thanks to Mr. Klinsky. Item number 2, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 2, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and as for the fiscal year 2014, Blowers Creek Stormwater Lift Station and Dry Run Creek Improvements, contract number 842.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number 2?
There were no written objections.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either for or against the Blowers Creek Lift Station and the Dry Run Creek Improvements? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, etc.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to city engineer for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 bids, is that all, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, we have 5 bids tonight, with an estimate on this of $3,857,071. $3,857,071 is our engineer's estimate. We have 5 bids. Madam Clerk, please.
First bid is from Palacki Construction Company from Iowa City, Iowa. Yeah, I think you're right.
Carol, do we have the bids?
Pardon?
Did we have the bid secured?
Yeah, there was a 5% bid bond.
Thank you.
The second one is from Carl A. Nelson &amp; Company from Burlington, Iowa. $5,318,500. $5,318,500. Excuse me. 5,031,850.00 with a 5% bid bond.
Big.
Big numbers.
Big numbers.
Big numbers. Next one is Larson Construction Company from Independence, Iowa. 3,570,000, 000.00 with a 5% bid bond. Next bid is Rice Lake Construction from Deerwood, Minnesota. Bid is in the amount of $4,893,500. 4,893,500.00 with a 5% bid bond. Last one is WRH Incorporated from Amana, Iowa. The bid is an amount of $4,290,000. 4,290,000, 000.00 with a 5% bid bond.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, please, a second.
Eric?
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving construction plans in sanitary sewer, serving Ridgeway Development's sanitary sewer extension as submitted by Wayne Clausen Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, and Sewer Treatment Agreement, DNR Form 29, November 2000, with the Department of Natural Resources, and the final acceptance of construction plans, subject to the review and acceptance by the DNR. Also in 4, I move to adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to Municipal Pipe Tool, Inc. of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of $641,171.36, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance, in conjunction with the Phase 1 CIP pipelining services area #15 and 16, contract #866, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Comments, Counsel? 3 and 4? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry. Item number 5, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
Number 5 is a motion to receive and file, consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the City Code of Ordinance, Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1 Traffic Code, by adding Section 6-1-4, City Infraction Ticket. This is amending the City Code of Ordinance, Title VI Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter 1 Traffic Code, by adding Section 6-1-4, City Infraction Ticket.
Second. Very good, thank you, Mr. Walper, Mr. Hart. Counsel, we had a work session on this earlier, but are there questions regarding item number 5? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion is, does not pass. We will take this up for the second reading next week. Item number 6, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 6, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending ordinance #5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving rezone on certain property, and as for the rezone requests from Stainless Investments LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, to rezone approximately 0.41 acres of land located at 811 Elliott Court from R2, 1 and 2 family residence district to C1CZ, conditional zoning district, to allow for a 20 by 60 or 1,200 square foot addition to the existing building, as well as expand the vehicular area located at 3533 Terrace Drive.
Second. Questions or comments, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
It was my understanding that there is some time sensitivity to both 6 and 7 this time?
Well, there is, in the fact that these people are ready to build, they have ordered all of their equipment, they are waiting for us to pass this, and the weather is now good enough that they can. So, they can't get started until this passes. They're wanting to build something in our city.
Mr. Mayor, did any other information come in, anyone opposed to the project, or any changes?
There's been no changes.
Okay.
So, it's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times, and adopt the ordinance.
Second. And it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. And again, thank you, Counsel. Stainless Investments also thanks you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending #5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property for request by Stainless Investment LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for site plan amendment to the C1CZ, conditional zoning district, to allow for a 20 by 60, 1,200 square foot addition to the existing building, as well as expand a vehicular area located at 3533 Cedar Terrace Drive.
Second. Very good, thank you. Mr. Hart, Counsel, do you have any questions? It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, thank you very much, Counsel. Again, it's appreciated that we pass that tonight. Let's do 8 and...
Is that just more?
I know they are, but I'm... Let's do them separately, please. Let's do number 8.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey, please.
I make a motion approving change order, number 1, for a net increase in the amount of $24,777 for work performed by Failer Hurley Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with Waterloo City Council Chambers renovation project, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carry. Let's do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, just to make sure.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Item 9?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 9, I'd like to make a motion approving change order, extra work order, number 1, for a net increase in the amount not to exceed $35,975 for additional asbestos abatement services, in conjunction with fiscal year 2013 asbestos abatement contract with Active Thermal for 300 West Third Street, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second. Questions or comments, Counsel, regarding item number 9?
Mr. Mayor, could we have a little overview of what this is about, please?
Uh, yeah, which one is this? This is, who's going to speak to this today? Chris, please.
Chris Western, planner at City of Waterloo. This situation, well, let's start with, there was a survey done on this property. The project got underway, and I was called by the contractor to come out, and I walked the roof on several occasions. And the initial, what's happening here is that the survey required for the built-up roof to be removed. And the contractor, once he got halfway done, realized that underneath what is considered built-up roof, there is some remaining four layers of tar paper from an existing roof system that evidently was left because it was too difficult to remove. So, they removed what they could, and then redid the roof and built it up. So, there, in the survey, there was not a core sample taken, where it would've taken samples of all the layers from the top, all the way through the wood deck. So, these four layers of tar paper were not shown in the report.
Chris, I have a quick question.
Mr. Hart? Before you're done, Mr. Schmidt?
Go ahead, go ahead. I was just wondering, Mr. Western, the person that, what company did the survey?
Cardino. And they're located on East Fourth Street.
Cardino, C-A-R-D-N-O?
Yes.
And they were the, they obviously bidded for that project, and they were the low bid.
Yes.
Do we know if any of the other bids actually had the additional work that needed to be done on this building included in their survey?
I'm not 100% sure, but typically, there is a standard of how samples are taken. And in all of their initial summaries, they point out that they used industry standards for surveys, and they have certain criteria to meet to stay in compliance with the state. So, to answer more specifically, I don't know that the, any other companies that bid were proposing to do core samples.
And have we, have we, because the only challenge I have is that the project was $43,000. This is $35,000, $36,000, which is probably, don't quote me on this number, but about 90% of that particular project. And so, when I seen this initially, that's why I had questions about it, because I wanted to know how they could've actually missed that much, and then we actually paid them the money to actually do the work.
Yeah. And to be more specific, you know, it's, it's been hard for me to decide how this is going to go down. The surveyor, their response was, is that it's up to the contractor to field verify, which I agree to a point, but I think that from here on, I'm going to, and the specs require core samplings for all roofs, because I think a core sample would've found those four layers, and it would've been noted in the survey to begin with.
And also, at this point, I'm thinking that to go back and rebid that, when we gave the contract to Active Thermal to do work, it probably would cost us more money in essence, because they have to go back into the building, they have to bring equipment, they have to do all those other things to do it. So, reluctantly, I'm going to support this tonight, but I think it needs to be duly noted that whoever did the original asbestos survey for this, that they need to be put on some type of notice, or some type of understanding for the quality of work that the city received.
I agree.
Mr. Schmidt, did you have further?
Quentin covered all my questions, yeah.
Well, and just for Counsel's information, this has been an unusual case. Well, you know what, it's not that unusual. We have had instances recently where the surveyor goes out and does surveying of asbestos, and we think that they've got it all.
Right.
And then the contractor that's bid to remove the asbestos goes in, and they find more. Most of the time, that no fault necessarily of the surveyor in the first place, you know, we can understand that there's asbestos that's... Chamberlain was a perfect example. You find whole rooms that you didn't even know were there. So, there's a need for a change order. This one, I agree with Mr. Western, I think that this got missed, unfortunately. And I don't think it should have, but it did. But the fact remains that, like you said, Mr. Hart, Active Thermal did the bidding, and they were the low bidder. So, to go back and rebid this, I think would be futile, and probably more expensive in the long run. But, having said all of that, what this case has done is caused us to make some relatively serious changes to our bid documents, and to our requirements for both the surveyor and the asbestos removal, that they take responsibility for what's in that building. And somebody had better dad gum make sure that they know what's there, because we're not going to continue to do this.
Right.
In this particular case, I think we are where we are, and we need to move forward with it. Mr. Schmidt?
So, do the surveyors typically not have any kind of liability insurance, or any kind of performance?
Yes, they're required to have liability insurance. But one thing that pretty much all, in their defense, all asbestos survey companies have in their reports that there is a chance that things can be missed, there is a chance that this is not 100% survey. So, that's not unusual. Like I said, I just think that a core sample would've found these layers, and it would've been a lot simpler and easier on us.
Just last question, too. So, Mr. Western, so, would you say the percentage of the asbestos that was missed is how great? Because, okay, you can miss, like, you know, some areas, but you're talking about different layers that was actually missed. So, my question, well, you don't even have to answer it, but the percentage of what was missed by that contractor is probably what really concerns me about that project.
Right. And they basically missed a whole layer.
Yeah.
Because they didn't do the core sampling, but, you know, another thing, Counsel, just again, for your information, this came up, this issue started way back before the end of year, that we were, we found ourselves to be in this case, and we have gone through legal maneuvering and wrangling with our attorneys and their attorneys, both the remover and the surveyor. We've contemplated legal action, we've contemplated several things to try to write this, and it all boils down to, all of them are going to cost us more than paying the change order and getting the thing taken care of, and then changing our procedure going forward.
And just one last clarification. The reason that the cost is so high is that that original four layers of our tar paper is extremely difficult to remove. Situations like this, they'll usually take almost the entire roof off, because it's easier, faster, and cost-effective for their clients to just take the roof and everything out, along with the parapets and the skylights, where there's asbestos tar paper around the skylights. So, that kind of took the price up a little higher. It's not an easy removal.
Mr. Jones, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Are there further questions? Mr. Lynn?
Question? Hey, Chris, and I assume you've done this. We've sent city staff out there to make sure this is a reasonable amount, haven't we?
Yes. I've talked with different individuals from DNR, other surveyors around the, actually outside the city, so I can get an honest answer. I've talked with several people in the industry, and it was iffy, but they felt that based on the amount, that this is probably a reasonable amount.
Chris, is this one of those things where we basically have to do it? I mean, if we voted no, what would happen?
Well, if you vote no, I would have to...
Do it himself.
Either, there's two options. I'd have to try and convince the contractor and their bonding company that that layer, those four layers should've been removed with the original contract, or bid it, rebid it.
And basically, we've already done the first part, through the attorneys, and there was no bite on that.
But, Chris, did they bid upon the specs that are given? So, they bid, they bid based upon their walkthroughs, and based upon what the survey tells them is in that building. Does that play a factor?
Correct.
So, I think we're just basically in a situation where we need to make sure next time that that survey that's done for the work meets whatever standards, you said industry standards, or that we get what we need to have. It's not Active Thermal's fault. They got into the situation because there's more work to be done than what was originally surveyed. But we have to get this building down, and we have to get it taken care of, but I'm just...
How many bids were there on this, Chris?
I believe for the abatement, there was three or four.
And did any of those three or four do a core sample?
No.
No.
For the abatement, no, no one did any core samples after the survey was completed. Yeah.
Okay. With nothing further, it's, let's, well, let's try a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Counsel. And I just noticed something that I'm going to throw in right now. I happened to watch last week's Counsel, the rerun of it, and I noticed that some of you are doing it. If you haven't, if you watch the reruns, if you're not speaking right into the microphones, it's very difficult to hear. So, let's really try, when you're speaking, try to remember to speak into the microphone. If you don't, it's very difficult to hear when it's on the recording. So, please try, and some of you are.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to instruct city engineer to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract for the FY 2014 West Airline Highway Rehabilitation Contract, #827.
Second. I guess I asked for that, didn't I? Counsel, do you have questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, file, plan, specification, form of contract, etc.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, etc.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
seventh, two thousand fourteen and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. And that is a roll call vote, ladies and gentlemen. That's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to mayor and counsel on any matter that was not covered tonight, please come to the microphone, identify yourself and limit your comments to three minutes, Jim, please.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I got some concerns coming out of the West Side Neighborhood Association. If I can find a pair of glasses, I'll read this stupid thing. Please excuse my reading, not too good, my spelling's worse. It took me seventy years to learn how to spell "sure." So, question, city signed a lease for a dollar to operate the sportsplex. Operating costs of the sportsplex. What is the operating cost? Example, people's services, utility, gas, electric, water, sewage, garbage pickup, security, vending machines, janitor services, swimming pool maintenance, basketball floor upkeep and so forth. Who gets the membership fees? Do they cover the operating costs? Where in the city budget do we see these operating costs? Where does the money come from to cover the operating costs and how much are the operating costs? In eight years, we will purchase the sportsplex for one dollar. Do the membership fees cover all the expenses? How did the city pay for the properties they purchased for the parking lots? The city paid assessed value and sometimes more in assessed value for these houses and buildings they demolished for parking lots. Was there also a demolition cost? I understand the city had agreement with the WDC that the city would provide parking. Where is it in the budget? The operation threshold building is a very good example for the city expense. Now, we are adding onto the purchase price for the removal of asbestos shingles before the building is demolished. Does the purchase price include the demolition costs? Lots of unanswered questions for taxpayers. The part that really bothers me is the statement that Mr. Walsh, through the WDC will operate twenty-seven and a half million dollar facility for eight years. It is essential acting for the city so they shouldn't have to pay taxes. That, to me, is a cover-up, is how big business avoid paying taxes. It was also stated that the city is leasing the sportsplex for a dollar to operate. As of right now, we are having police calls to the sportsplex. This will probably increase. This will be an added expense to the city.
Mr. Chapman, I will forward your list of questions to the property authorities and we'll get them all answered and get them back to you, sir. Thank you.
Can we get something that I can take to the Neighborhood Association?
Sure.
Show them, because a lot of people don't come to me.
Sure.
Thank you.
You bet. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jack Black, two-twenty-seven Downing Avenue. Begin with, I'm a longtime Waterloo Blackhawk fan since the sixties and they draw over nine hundred... Nine hundred thousand or ninety thousand fans per season. You have wrestling tournaments there and all this Grand Motel over here, that lot's gone. That lot's always full, the empty lot across from Burger King's always full. And, of course, this week, we had sellouts, two sellouts. Of course, they had things going on in here, or in this lot, which is fine. I had fans or friends of mine that sit in my section, had to park on the east side of the river and walk across the river, across the bridge there. Some of them were way down by the Russell Lamson Hotel. I know they had a pool tournament, that's fine. But, and I'll grant you, hockey fans will go through, excuse my English, hell, to get to a game. Thank you. And I know there is a member on the panel that goes to our games and we appreciate it. Thank you.
I was at both of them, Jack. And isn't it a wonderful thing that we had events all over our downtown and we had a difficult place to find parking? I think it's great. Forrest?
Forrest Diluvu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I have a problem with change orders whenever I see them. These things are put out for bid, I would like to see them come in at bid. You know, many things are held to it. One thing is the council chambers. Was there hidden asbestos in there? Looks to me like there's twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars in change order. Did you order softer chairs or... We didn't get any explanation. Could you explain that to us?
I can't. Craig, there was... Go ahead, please.
Craig Clark, building official. There was, I guess, quite a few different things, the largest two being a new council desk. The original proposal did not have a new desk in it. This will have a new desk in it. The other part was the raised platform that is there. When it was originally built, it was built out of standard lumber in a building that is like City Hall. It needs to have non-combustible material being used for building elements. So, one of the other proposals is to take that whole thing out and rebuild it with fire-treated lumber is what they're going to use.
Forrest, I had the same questions, I think, all of council did, when we saw the change order for the council chambers. I was concerned about it. I wish it wouldn't have happened. Craig was right up front about the bid for the desk, the bid specs didn't include a desk. It was just an oversight, a flat oversight. The council chambers was going to get redone and there was going to... We could use card tables, I guess, and maybe that's what you prefer, but there was no desk in there. So, we have to have someplace to sit and have chairs behind. The other part is that riser, the riser, if you went in there and looked at it now, it's about to fall apart. It has to be rebuilt and the wiring underneath it's wired together with electrician's day... I mean, it's a mess. So, those are the two items. We wish that we wouldn't have had it, but we do.
Well, I would encourage someone to look at these build specs and make sure that they includes things like that, just like the roof.
And we should.
You know, we've got to... We've got to hold bidders to it.
Yeah.
Because it always looks to me like someone bid higher, maybe they were going to do the things that got done. Maybe one of those bids for the building, maybe they knew that there was more roof up there or... And so, it may have been cheaper.
Yeah.
We never know.
Okay.
We just got our bill hanging out there.
I'll take a little bit of time and I'll try to explain one thing on the asbestos bid. The bids were let on an amount, so the bidder's price didn't go up. It was that there was more material that was found that caused the cut price to go up. His price per unit didn't go up, it was just that there was more that was found. So, no matter who would have bid on it, when there was more asbestos found, it would have gone up because there was asbestos that was missed in the survey. So, again, I'd rather it didn't happen, but the bid price, the per unit price didn't go up. Next, sir.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth. I spent some time in Germany and we always seemed to have to take the lowest bid here. When I was in Germany, involved a little bit with what was going on there. They threw out the high bid, they threw out the low bid and took the guy in the middle because they figured he was making a better profit or decent profit and he was doing a better job. Keep that in mind. The other thing that I'm wondering about on this city infraction ticket, has anybody investigated what the state's going to say about that? Because if, in fact, they determine after you issued the hundred dollar ticket, that no, it should have been, the state ticket is going to be over and above, so you, instead of a hundred and ninety-five, you get ninety-five, it's going to be a two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollar ticket, so the city still gets a hundred and five now instead of five dollars more? You go into a city ticket for a hundred bucks, you get ninety-five out of the state ticket, you're doing all this ordinance change, all this wasted time for five dollars.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else? Jimmy, you've already had once, please. Well...
I did take my three minutes.
Okay. We're going to keep it to one person, one topic, three minutes. Jimmy, you've got your one chance here, or not one chance, excuse me, but you're... Go ahead.
Okay. On the Grand Hotel, did we not have a change order on that one too when they were demolishing that one?
I don't remember. I don't remember, Jim.
There was something underground.
Yeah, there was some crackers underground.
Was there? Okay.
John Turbin, seventeen fifteen, Robin Road. First, I'd like to apologize, Mr. Morrissey has sort of sidelined him and got him in a bad spot last week, not intentional, because I usually talk to people before I get up here and talk about it. The second thing, back to the Grand Motel or Hotel, it would be real easier for us, I think, as citizens, if, like the taxes, we don't have a clue what we're going to get back and, you know, we get twenty-year abatement, forty-two percent, and there were some numbers fired here, but we don't have a clue. You know, how much is a forty-two percent of some number? What is our actual payback for those twenty years? Would, you know, are we... We have no clue when we hear these big six, eight, ten million dollar projects, what we're actually going to get back at whatever the end of that tax period is.